Together for the Concord and Concord Carlisle School Committees. It's August 6th and we are being recorded. We have in attendance Erin and Chris and Jeremy. From school and staff side, thank you very much. If you stay with us well and good, if you choose to leave, make sure you throw hosting responsibilities our way. And with that, we are picking up our work after a significant hiatus. We haven't met since February. You've seen the agenda and the torrent of attachments that went your way yesterday. Don't, don't get overwhelmed, we're going to chip away at this. Our, our finding in the past has been that policy work is very time intensive, very labor intensive, requiring just extraordinary concentration because the words matter and the interrelationships matter. And we have some 330 policies already, and now we're talking about more policies. So not, not insignificant for the detail involved. Hi Lori.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thank you.
I had a little, what link am I going to moment? And then remembered it wasn't a Zoom call that I arranged, but.
Something you didn't host?
Yeah, like, oh, wait, wait, Chris did that one.
So my thinking about today is that had we not a pandemic and a roadmap in front of us that we have to look at, we would be picking up where we left off in February. And that was with work on civil rights and hate speech policy and gender identity policy. But I'm going to propose that we, we move to change the order and move our COVID related policies first and foremost with the idea that that is very time sensitive. Not to say anything else is less important, but some things are more dictated by time than others. And school reopening and its various possible forms is critical. So I thought we might look at very COVID specific policies first. There are a couple of overarching ones that could be placed in and around every other policy that we have and would facilitate the superintendent's work and our role as well as a school committee. And then move to other work that is underway. First, however, I don't see we have any public comments necessary. We have the minutes of the February 27 meeting and I'm the only school committee member who was in attendance, who's still standing. But I don't think I can approve them as one out of three if you abstain. I'm not sure what Robert's rules would tell us about that. So I might propose that you make an exception to what you'd normally do. And that is abstain from a minute, a meeting you didn't attend, a meeting you didn't attend. And in this case, simply approve the minutes so we can get them recorded. Noting however, that you were not in attendance and were in this unusual circumstance. Does that sound appropriate to everybody?
Yep.
Okay.
Want to make a new policy? No, just kidding.
That's the danger of this one.
All right. And do we have a motion to accept the minutes of February 27, 2020?
So moved.
All right. Thank you Cynthia. And a second? In a second. Thank you, Sarah. And discussion, none, I believe. Lori, you're in accord with these minutes?
Yes.
Erin, thank you. And those in favor? And we do a roll call. Sarah?
Wilson, aye.
Okay. And Rainey?
Aye.
And Booth, aye. Thank you. So minutes accepted and we can get those posted. Okay. With that, I believe that the three policies that we would perhaps look at first and foremost would be number one. If you don't have this, we'll email it to you immediately and we can get it on the screen in a matter, a minute or two, would be the one sent to us by MASC. And it's titled Policy Issues for the Pandemic. I believe it came out July 30th from MASC. And it's Creation of a General Parenthesis Interim Close Parenthesis Policy on COVID Related Issues. File EBC Supplemental. Do we have that one in front of us? Okay.
Yes.
So this one basically is the one that leads off with the school committee takes note of the COVID-19 emergency resulting disruption of the traditional school day, et cetera, et cetera. And continues therefore, the school committee establishes an emergency interim policy too. And lists several bullets, basically affirming what we're all about here. Safety and continuation of educational services and support for students in general and especially those at high risk and compliance with emergency orders of the governor. And adherence to the extent possible to guidance of DSC and other agencies of state and federal to expedite the strongest strategy for returning students to school. Note, it doesn't say how they would return to school. Although there's certainly inference there, I suppose. And then it goes into referencing general district goals affected by the pandemic. And then it cites by letter designation references to other policies, all of which exist in our own policies at Concord, Concord, Carlisle, with the exception of one. We have JCA Student Assignment, Stu School Calendar, ICICA, Class Size, IIB, Attendance, JH, Time on Learning, ICICA ID. Grading, isn't this exciting? I'm sorry, but grading and retention, IKE. Local Graduation, IKF, with a typo there. Education, we can spell education correctly in our policy. And then the next one, Special Education, IHB, we have. And the final two, IHBA, IHBF, we have IHBA referencing disabilities, one of the disabilities policies, I don't believe is, is active and considered one of our own. So I don't know if anybody has our own website up as well.
In one second.
But I believe Cynthia, you'll be able to verify that. And I looked at it, it doesn't seem to be something that we need to suddenly pause and add because I think it is covered in many ways elsewhere. So again, you're looking for IHBA, and I don't believe you're going to find.
We have an AA, but not an A.
But not an A. Okay. So, so we don't want to adopt this exactly as is because we can't reference policy we don't have. We would drop out IHBA. Earlier on, we'd spell education correctly. And then it simply continues on very, very quickly for the record here. Discipline, JICJK. Exemptions, JL. Job Descriptions, GCA. Students at Risk, JIEJLJLCJLLCC. Privacy, JRA. I want to come back to that in a moment. And homeschooling, IHBG. Homebound Instruction, IHBF. And there's some that don't have letter designations here, SRO references and so on. Eligibility Extracurricular, JJ. Attendance, JH. Visitors, KI. Illness and Contact Tracing, JLCC. Transportation and Busing, EEAEAA, EEAEC, EAG. And finally, Operations and Plant Maintenance, EC and ECA. So it's this overarching kind of policy that's an interim emergency policy. And it calls out these as obvious references, but I'm sure it would encompass others as well with the. I don't mean this pejoratively, pretty predictable ideas put forth in this policy. I want to ask us to pause and look at the reference to privacy of students. And if you're with us Lori, second paragraph on this document, Privacy of Students, File JRA. Mass law prohibits the recording of individuals without their permission, et cetera, et cetera. We've looked at this a couple of times in a couple of ways. And now we're planning for the remote instruction that could come from various places. From in a, in a school classroom that goes to student homes, from a teacher's home that goes to student homes and so on. Talking about the challenges of getting synchronous and asynchronous opportunities out in front of students. Any issues here that you foresee other than the, the accidental ones that we're going to stumble into if we're not lucky?
No, I think we're going to be really clear about this. We're putting together a student contract, it'll name this, we're going to disable the recording. I'm actually double checking that in Zoom now to be sure that we could, en masse, would like to just turn it off. But I think that's our intention is to uphold this and that will be what's communicated to everyone. Teachers have a little hope to record themselves, but that's different than recording students. So I think we'll have to be very clear that if they're going to record anything, they can record themselves teaching or whatever, but they cannot record students. If they've got a specific, one question that did come up, which I'm sure we can navigate, is if they have a very specific purpose for a student to record or even self-record, which is different than what this means, in my opinion, but we need to clarify. You know, if they've got a project and one of the means of the project is to produce a video and they're the one delivering the information in the video, can they self-record? That, that's different than being recorded in a school environment or platform unknowingly. So we just got to get through the nuances of all of it and be really clear. Yeah.
But this, this interim emergency policy wouldn't create new difficulties for us?
No, in fact, it'll reinforce the, the traditional policies. And just now that we've got new tools in the mix, we've got to reinforce the message.
Anywhere in the contract language or elsewhere, is there a reference that MGL generally doesn't permit recording without the permission of the parties involved?
Well, so for the wrong reasons, I know a lot about this. Mass General Law prohibits audio recording without permission in Massachusetts?
Wire.
Yeah, it's wiretapping. So, but the, the way it was explained to me, the law hasn't been reviewed in a long time. So it hasn't caught up with the fact that so many audio recordings are actually video now. So that, that's an interesting, so this is synced up with that in a way. This is more prohibitive than the law currently is. The law is silent on being recorded on video without permission. So.
One other minor typo here I found. And I'm sorry that I didn't add page numbers to their document. If we were to look at a bullet several above this Privacy of Students that I've been looking at, JRA. I printed it out on page four for me, under Discipline and Suspension. If you can find that bullet.
I'm with you.
Second paragraph, I simply thought it was a sentence structure here. Further, the superintendent shall provide in these quote unquote back to school plans, provisions for students were disciplined. So minor point here, but I think we should read who were disciplined or we simply dropped the word were, W-E-R-E, and students disciplined or suspended. Just a little less clunky.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, drop that word. Other comments, questions, considerations about this one? And indeed, is this one that we should start with next Tuesday for a first reading by the full committee for later adoption?
So just so we're consistent, there's little things like homebound is hyphenated than is not in the privacy. And in the homeschooling one, I'm sorry, IHBG.
Okay. Now let's take a minute and clean it up. That's, we, we prefaced this with this stuff takes time. You said that was IH?
I'm not sure what it is in the original. Go look.
So I'm looking at one where it reads homebound as a single word, no, no hyphen, a compound word. Is that the way we should delineate?
I'm just trying to find it. I think we go with one word, which is good because I think that's correct.
I get it on, I'm going to go backwards. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Eight bullets, the eight back from the end of the document. Is where I get some of our homebounds. And Erin, we might ask you to simply do a word search and clean that one up.
Looks like MASC uses one word for the most part because the only time it comes up hyphenated is in the guidelines for reopening.
Yep.
Good. All right.
I think.
So we'll go with one word.
And then, these aren't great deals. Extracurriculars, hyphenated in one place. So JJ, Eligibility for Participation Extracurricular Activities. It's one word.
So let's go with one word again. Extracurricular, okay. And I'm comfortable with the back to school instead of the roadmap that's been in our language simply because they put it in quotes so frequently. And I don't think there's any, going to be any confusion about what we're talking about. Do you Lori?
No, I don't. There is a typo in the illness and con, well, there's a typo, a couple typos. Illness and contact tracing, not contract.
That's going to be the third bullet from the end.
Should be contact, not contract. And then COVID has an extra R in it.
And we can look at this again because it's a first read on Tuesday. And then if things move ahead, it would be adopted at the following meeting. Anything else for now?
No, I think I don't have anything else.
All right.
Possessive under transportation and busing relating to IEPs. And that's, and should IEPs just be a small s after the P?
Yeah, I think so.
Not an apostrophe? See it, you see it mixed a lot because people just throw it in, so.
But you're right, technically it's IEP, S, small s. I think, good. Rather than deciding on each one with a vote, perhaps as we near the end of our meeting, we can decide with a single vote which ones we move forward for a first read. Anything else on this one?
So this is known as EBC Supplemental, right?
Correct. And EB is a safety, excuse me, EB. EB is safety. EBB is first aid. EBCD is emergency closing. So it'd be a subset of safety.
Now, just in terms of process, there's, we have to be clear, we're not going to go back link to, from every one of these to this document, right?
No, I'd.
I don't think we have to. It's known as an interim. It simply calls out that the superintendent is going to potentially make a lot of moves in a lot of areas.
On the homepage of the, of the policy manual, should there be something that just says for most up to date COVID related stuff? Click here. And that would link to this references, the other stuff?
That's going to get tricky with the MASC interface that we play with. Instead, I think that might go out in a superintendent update.
Yeah.
I agree with you, we should call it out. But I think MASC doesn't make it easy because we leap to their site and we then fall into their formatting. Am I correct?
Yeah. And I think the other place we could, yes, that is correct. I think we can look at other places to put it. Certainly the reopening webpage could have a link to it. And yeah, just try to.
And.
This would be one I might need available, right? So let's make sure we know how to access it and that people are aware.
And are you working on the contract document right now? Or will you?
The student contract and parent? Yes, yes, we're in process.
Even if it's a single reference to all the policies, why don't we make sure there's a policy reference there?
And Lori, just is it going to be something like a policy, like we have our, I forget, the technology policy, you know?
Acceptable use piece. I want to give that more thought, I think.
That's it. It's fine.
Yeah, I almost feel like for it to be, it has to be under the umbrella of one of the committee policies. And it's not that it wouldn't be, but not directly, so.
I just think if it's in the school manual, that would be sufficient. Either reopening manual or wherever. Okay, thanks.
The next one we received from MASC was Remote Learning and Remote Learning Addendum. And this would, would intersect with IJM, the number of digital policies. But I don't think would, would collide with any of them in a way that was problematic. So if we could turn to that, this, the Remote Learning, IHBHE begins once again, in the event of a district specific emergency, requiring the use of remote learning and so on. As soon as possible, go to school committee. The remote learning plan is applicable in situations A, B, and C. Stop me wherever you want here. The superintendent shall establish a plan for remote learning. And then we have a number of bullets which are, again, not to diminish them, but you know, pretty bread and butter here, pretty, pretty expected.
Yeah.
Kinds of language. So the remote planning, learning plan will, to the extent possible, bullets. And then in developing the plan, the superintendent will, you certainly brought in our stakeholders, collaborate with municipal agencies, consult with school committee, consult with administrators, utilize tech resources, inventory, privacy rights. So of course, got lots of overlaps here. Consult with bargaining units, that's underway. And financial implications with MASC's cross-reference. I didn't see anything that gave me pause here. Did anybody catch anything? This one, we simply adopt wholesale?
It felt, you know, it feels pretty spot on to me, which I'm not sure I could have done as good of a job without, without an outside view vantage point, so.
No. And then let's, we can come back to this, but let's now take a look at their addendum, which is same call letters, IHBHE with now dash C. And the addendum, Issues to Consider. So it lays out some questions. These are, I guess, designed to say, hey, wait a minute, make sure you get this right. Is my interpretation.
Yeah, it's interesting. This feels more operational to me, which is, that's the, sometimes the nature of an addendum. We've, just in general in the policy book, we've been pulling back some of the more operational things and not, not having the book carry those. But in this case, I don't know that it's, I'm not sure, I feel strongly one way or the other about this, but.
Well, and another way to do it is to, you know, I'm not wedded one way or another. So let me ask this question. In these times when we might lean more operationally than we would otherwise, if we do that, are we going to regret it later and need to claw something back? Which is work we don't want to do. Because another way to do this is to reference it in the remote learning policy, even though it's not one of our policies, we, we can reference it as assurance that the superintendent is expected to know it and see it. But not have it staring in everybody's face as policy number 335.
I don't feel strongly either way, so who would others weigh in?
Well, given the, given the times, if we are on the fence about it, I'd say throw it in because the more we can say we're following the advice of the experts to protect our kids and our teachers, the better. I don't want to discuss why we didn't put it in. I'd rather regret a little bit putting it in. Came our way as a recommendation. I think we'd need an explicit reason for not doing it. And the reason is, we don't want policies to get too operational. That's legitimate. I get that. Is that a strong enough argument to pull this back?
Is there any way to put it in as like an interim policy or, you know, provisional, like to, to not really keep it forever, but to then at least leave the opportunity to review it going down the road? The operational nature of it?
Yeah, I think we, if we're, if we're good wordsmithing today, we could reference, as some others do, that this is going to be effective until such time as the governor declares the pandemic emergency behind us.
That makes sense. Yeah, that makes sense.
Let's do. Let's do that, and let's not fuss with the words now unless somebody's feeling particularly gifted with the wording. Let's adopt language we've seen elsewhere. I think I'm going to find it about pandemic and governor declaration. We'll put that in. So during the period designated as a pandemic emergency by the governor.
Yeah, that's probably smart because in case it doesn't get reviewed and the pandemic's over and then someone wants remote plans, you want to have a qualifier there.
All right, so we put that big qualifier on that and it will require some boilerplate language like that before Tuesday. So we'll press on and go to face coverings. This is the one that came our way just this week. This was EBCFA. In paragraph two, it, final sentence, it reads exempted from this policy are students in grade one and below, that's not the case in our district.
That's the one thing that jumped out at me.
So we strike that. What, do we know what's happening on the Carlisle side, Sarah?
Sorry, on face cover, what?
Yeah, is there, is there a grade level for face covering or is it all grade levels?
Right now, it's all grade levels.
Okay, so we're all synced up there. And are you comfortable, Lori, with the language here that then will have to align with regulations?
I think so. Yeah, the physician note, for sure.
The only concern I had is has trouble breathing. What does that mean? I just, as the, as an excuse not to wear one at stores. Just kind of like to remove that and then is unconscious? Do we have to really say that? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I see, yeah.
I don't want to touch it.
I would keep it in, yeah.
I don't want to touch it.
That would be one that.
I don't want to touch it.
Has trouble breathing in.
Leave it in.
Okay.
We are, we, we can't have a person not clinically trained air on the side of masks if there's any, any potential breathing compromise.
Okay.
We've got to make our mistake toward mask off.
I understand. But I think it leans heavily on a physician's note in general. So at the moment, somebody's having trouble breathing, I get it. But in general, it would not be walking into the building every day saying, I don't have to do this. Okay.
Correct.
Because kids who have trouble breathing every day are going to require another level of intervention from us.
And we know, we know about them already, so that will be something already being discussed, not the, I see your concern, I don't think anyone saying, you know, any regularity of saying you're having trouble breathing questioned at some point. Sooner than later, for sure.
Then then dealing with this is at the discretion of the bulls and obviously you'll have a process in place.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Good, I agree, thank you.
On the the paragraph fourth from bottom, reading if violations, sorry, if students are in violation, the building principal will consult with the parent guardians to determine, let's put parent guardian, not guardians, plural. One will suffice, to determine whether an exception is appropriate, comma, or the student may be removed from the school building for in-person learning. And I just flagged that word for in-person learning, you're removing them from the building for in-person learning. I think what, it's a little clearer, if it's maybe removed from the building and in-person leading, learning. Because what you're getting removed from is not learning, you're getting removed from the in-person kind of learning.
Right, in the building, right, yeah.
So I propose we drop the word for and put in the word AND.
Yep.
Yeah, I think so.
I think it's a little better.
I feel like they must have written that because there might be other reasons that somebody would be in the school building and that that would, they need to leave the window open for them to still have access to the school building for something. But, but I don't understand what it would be, as long as they're not in compliance with the requirement, you know, so.
I see what you're saying, yeah, possibly.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the, the extreme of that is, you know, a no trespass order when we've got safety, you know, violent safety concerns or something like that. Which is clearly not what this is intending, so that may be part of the distinguished.
Yeah.
And, or for?
I'm fine with and.
For now, let's flag it though as.
Yeah.
A little thing, two, two more paragraphs down, visitors in violation. I think that means the visitors who would still be allowed in, beyond the no visitor policy that's in place.
Exactly. Very few, but when they, whoever it is, that's, this mask is required.
Here are people, et cetera, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you want to caveat it further with permitted visitors? Just a flag that visitors as we know it don't exist right now? I'm, I'm getting too fine, maybe.
Yeah, because I just wouldn't want to breed a question of who, the permitting process.
Yeah, I solve one problem, create another, leave it alone?
I think so.
Okay.
So Lori, violations of this policy by staff will be handled in the same manner as other violations of school committee policy. What does that mean to you?
Staff discipline.
Okay. Good. Is there any notion of, does it qualify as saying hours, school day, anything like that? I'm just trying to.
What are you going, where are you going with that, Cynthia?
So it's just that we want face coverings all the time, not just.
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't, doesn't limit it, right, anywhere?
No, it doesn't.
I looked carefully at the language, additionally, face coverings will not be required when appropriate social distancing is enforced. Those four bullets seem to make sense and be pretty explicit. Barring that, the mask is on. Okay.
Yeah.
Where to next?
So the, the ones that I flagged a week ago simply to look at today or to assign to the three of us or four of us to study, because this will be ongoing work. We're ADF wellness, is there anything there that we just want to be familiar with again? CHA, developing regulations, this is one that invests authority in superintendents. Seem to be pertinent to the times. The EB's generally around safety, first aid, and emergency closings, but nothing left out that required change or gave me pause, but I thought they're relevant. EE's around bus conduct, I thought would require some attention, just to make sure we're comfortable with those. Because buses are a fearful prospect for us right now, I think. IC, the school year, the IHB's homebound, the IJ's digital, the IJ OA student contract. I wonder if in light of the fact that we're talking about new contracts, we should peek at that. Showing my bias, I pulled out dress code. Because I wonder if we want a policy that refers to, for lack of a better word, your decorum on, on a remote platform.
Oh. Some, I, they have, some districts do have policies there.
So that, we're proposing that as part of the contract.
Okay.
Okay. But I would ask.
Get out of your pajamas and.
Do you want that strengthened with a look at JICA, Lori? You don't have to answer it now, but.
Yeah.
Put it on your list or.
Sure.
When you get to that point in the contract, note JICA and see if you want that.
Some districts have said strongly prefer that you not be in your bedroom. I know that's not possible for all families.
No, I, no, I think we were leaning more toward, you can't be like in the bed with the covers up. Many of the kids have to be in their bedroom, it's where they're, it's the quiet space they have, so.
When you have five people on Zoom calls at the same time.
Divert them out to the bedroom.
Only place you.
Let's not be like tucked in the bed. Sitting on the bed is fine.
And then the K-5 kids, do we want to have them supervised?
No, I think that's a family choice.
So I interrupted, you go, keep going, Court.
Yeah, no, those were the ones that, that I had, and then I, I know there are others that we might want to look at more generally that might require some cleanup. And you saw those on my table perhaps that I sent out some time ago, but nothing, nothing urgent. I guess my, because we've, we've done the, I think, the essential COVIDs for now. And because we have a considerable energy in the district to look at our, our policies and our outcomes regarding diversity and affirmative practices and anti-racism. And we've had a civil rights hate speech debate in the policy committee underway for some time. And we started out with the idea that we had both state and federal law where we want it, and we had our current policies where we want it. But we had a strongly held opinion by Yuval Erlich before he resigned, that he wanted more, more teeth, more accountability. And he did prevail with the last subcommittee, with Mr. Modell and with me. And so in February, before Lori's life got turned on its head, as did ours, she agreed to go back with Dorothy Presser of MASC to look at policies we were considering as models, notably Natick and Act in Boxborough. And so what might suffice for now is to indicate to our colleagues next Tuesday that these are back on the subcommittee agenda for consideration and discussion when we can reconvene with Dorothy and Lori about this. But hold off until that time. But at least be able to note that the thing's got traction again, I think that would be important. I'll note what I said to Lori privately was, in the absence of a, a strategic response to the community outcry, if you will, that we're hearing, we could at least be discussing activity and milestones that are suggestive of what someday might be a dashboard, if you will, a way to monitor our progress around protecting civil rights and creating a diverse workforce and supporting our kids of color and other more marginalized members of our population.
Just point of, this is not policy really, but there is a website that's gathering some of that work, just so you know, on my section of the webpage. So future down the road might be how we, we build that.
And what's your thinking, Lori, about for Tuesday night, simply having us reference that this is, 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 has not fallen off our priorities and it's a matter of doing what we said we were going to do in, in February, which was to dive into this specifically with Dorothy?
Yeah, that makes sense, I think, to just put it back on the discussion table that it's coming and this subcommittee will be bringing a draft of something, assuming the committees, the subcommittee still thinks that's the direction they want to go.
In terms of the gender identity one, which falls under the same category insofar as it's top agenda, requiring Dorothy's additional attention. The, the discussion and debate we had, again, looking at some other district policies, was around the, the rights and roles of parents in regard to a child's expression in, in the school. And that's where, for some people, this is quite tricky and nuanced. But my recollection from many months ago, it seems like a long time ago, is that one, one conclusion we came to was that if, if I prefer to be called Stephanie in my class and I'm a fourth grader, the school might do so.
I did get a legal opinion on that, that I can forward to the group. As, as part of that discussion, we, we had some follow-up with, with her.
Is my, is my crude way of summarizing it approaching what we think is true?
Yeah, and she's actually jogging me back to what I think we talked on, and then she confirmed, was that if it's a nickname versus legal name, those are two very different things from a legal perspective. If the, the parent has to agree to a legal name change, the student can't just come in, we have to abide by what's on birth certificates unless there's a clear document that does something else legally, but the student can be called anything they choose.
Yep.
Just as if, you know, take the gender identity out of it, if you're Robert, you can tell the teacher to call you Bobby.
Oh, okay.
So I'll forward this, she also review, referenced the DESI guidance on gender identity, which I think we did look at at one point.
Okay. So unless we're ready to dive into other things, what I'd like to do is ask that perhaps we, we agree to, number one, another meeting date, number two, to have members among us dive into some of the policies that I referenced and any others that you. members among us dive into some of the policies that I referenced and any others that you think, uh, we deserve to be very current on in our minds. Such as digital learning, such as homebound and so on. So that we can decide whether any of these need to be flagged or that they can coexist with the new policies that we're gonna recommend and, uh, with the practices that are gonna be in place until this pandemic is over. Would that be a, a way forward?
Sure.
Okay. Would anybody care to tackle the, the relevant, uh, E's? E B through E F, these are safety and bus conduct primarily. Just again, to go through them quietly and carefully and see if anything, uh, demands attention.
I can do that.
Sarah, you want to take that on?
Yep, I'll do the E's.
Okay. And, uh, I'd be happy to take a look at, uh, wellness, A B, A D F and its reference to isolation.
So A D F as in Frank?
A D F as in Frank, it's a wellness policy, but references isolation. So just, who knows, I just want to look at it.
Sure.
I, I'd be happy to take a careful look at C H A, the developing regulations, this is the permissive policy around Lori's authority commensurate with her responsibility. Unless you want to take that on Cynthia?
No, go ahead Court, I'll take the A D F.
Okay, you'll take A D F, good. And then we have a slew of, uh, I C through I J. These are school year and more notably homebound and digital. Can you peruse those Cynthia?
Sure.
So I C, I H B F, I H B G, I J N.
You have these on your, your list, correct?
Yeah, it's in that table.
Assign me, if you could just
I'll, I'll, I'll send it to you, okay, yeah, I'll send it to you. And, uh, I'll be happy to look at J I C A dress code and, uh, the J L's in their entirety around student welfare. Okay. And Lori, you didn't get any cuz you get to look at all of them if you want to.
Okay. In my free time. I thought you were gonna say, because I know you probably wouldn't be able to do what we need you to do.
I called, I called someone from the Carlisle School Committee today to ask her something about our policy and she, I called and she, I asked the question and she said, oh my God, it's finally some other topic.
It's absolutely right, I actually have had a couple of staff like, not Covid related. I'm like, you can ask me just about anything and probably get a yes if you don't have me talking about Covid.
Like going back to the nineties or something?
Yeah, anything at this point.
All right.
So what we didn't do was talk much about, uh, the subcommittee, uh, itself. My guess is that when we actually seek subcommittees and do our liaison assignments, that, uh, the three of us will get reassigned to right where we are now.
Probably a good prediction if I were a betting person.
And, uh, I believe that, uh, we should have a subcommittee chair and a subcommittee vice chair because then two out of three people can, uh, conduct a meeting with a structure in place. And, uh, I would be delighted to relinquish my role, I'll have plenty of roles in the year ahead. But I don't care whether you chair, chairing is mostly facilitation, it's not, uh, not, not something that's too time demanding. Say again?
But I don't underestimate that skill.
Okay. Well, we, the three, the three of us have it, I think, in adequate measure, I hope we do, I think we do. Anybody want to take on the chair, roll?
Now or?
Well, we can do it, it's, we're a subcommittee, we, uh, or does the chair name us, uh, name the? I forget now.
Oh, I, I do know the answer to this, and now I would want to look it up before I told you.
All right, well, let's
I think it hap- yeah, I think technically in your policies, again, back to the irony of all this. I think it's actually through the chair of the school committee.
Okay, so we'll, uh, double check that, okay. So maybe, uh, in this case, it would be a, be two chairs that have to concur.
Correct.
Right, right, right.
Okay. So we've got that noted. So I would, uh, stop me anytime, but I think I'm at the point where I would ask, uh, do we have a motion to bring for a first reading, uh, and a recommendation, uh, for adoption to the school committee policies, E B C supplemental? And E B C F A face coverings? He, I'm sorry, I H B H E, remote learning? And, uh, fourth, I H B H E dash E, remote learning addendum? With the notation that that would have additional language that it, uh, is in force, uh, until such time as the governor declares the pandemic behind us.
So moved.
All right, in a second, second, okay. Those in favor and Wilson?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
And Booth?
Aye.
Okay. Should we, are we okay to look at the next meeting date?
I'm, I prefer later in the day, that's just me, but the other thing is we need to get Dorothy. And we need Lori.
Oh, right, you are, yeah, yeah, so maybe we could, uh, do you want me to work with Dorothy or you on scheduling Lori? Maybe if you work with her, you
I'm happy to let you kick that off and maybe CC me and then Dorothy and I'll sync up first and then give you a couple of options for the, for the whole thing.
Okay, how's the four o'clock hour, uh, Cynthia?
So anything three or beyond, I can probably do.
Okay.
A little more and everybody a little more flexibility.
Is three o'clock too tight, you need three fifteen?
No, three o'clock's fine.
Okay. So hearing that, um,
Expect, you know, a two-hour window at most, I just
At most, yes.
Yeah, we've, we've debated longer than that, just to see if we could plow through and you kind of hit your limit at two hours is my experience. It's very tedious stuff sometimes.
Yeah, you know, you're going along nicely and then one, one phrase will trip you up for thirty minutes. And, and wear us out, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I would go the other way and I'd say, even though I don't, Dorothy's not driving to, to Concord anymore, so
Yeah.
I think people are fresh for like an hour and a half and then it's not so much.
Yeah.
Yeah, what's, what's the old saying, if it takes more than ninety minutes, either we didn't facilitate it well, or it's got a bad agenda, or it's a school committee meeting.
Like that.
Like that, yeah.
Okay, uh, so, um, potentially a week from today, there's nothing that requires a lot of, lot of homework here. We could look at thirteenth, maybe, we could look at, uh, maybe the following Thursday, the twentieth, and I've skipped the seventeenth, eighteenth, nineteenth because the, the many hearings and the school committee that week.
Yeah.
So I've got, uh, thirteenth is possible until somebody stops me the twentieth.
So Court, I'm just gonna caveat that with, if you and Lori and Wally can figure out the roadmap to get us through the financial budget picture. I'm just, I'm hoping, I don't know if we might need another meeting, I'm just, that's the only thing.
We, we decided today that we believe, uh, we, we hope, we believe that we could actually, uh, not only look at the FinCom request, but actually adopt new budgets next Tuesday.
Okay, then that's, then I think the thirteenth is on the table.
And that would have those budgets adopted before the public hearing that quickly follows.
Okay.
Okay. No promises, but that's the hope.
Good. It's a good hope.
So we had the twentieth and then, uh, we spill out to the week of the twenty-fourth, is Monday, the twenty-fourth a possible?
I have a feeling I'd prefer the week before, just
I think
Teachers are back the twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think the, the, you know, Lori, you should tell us, I, I think that, you know, sort of from some date to some date. To that date's gonna be, but you know, school opens, what the I should know this.
Yeah, the teachers are back the twenty-seventh, we're gonna start remote work with kids on the eighth and then the tenth is the, well, the ninth is the first day for the younger kids to be in the schools, if that all holds, so.
I would say through the twenty-fourth to that, I hate to say we can't do meeting, but I just think it's gonna be
No, I, you're right, totally right Cynthia, so I appreciate you thinking like that.
So let me add, uh, the Wednesday, the nineteenth to the list, the, the meeting that night is planning board, I don't think it's gonna consume any of us Concordites.
So let's see if we could do the thirteenth, I think that would be really good.
Yeah, the more we talk, I'm probably better on this part of August than I'm gonna be late in August and through parts of September.
Okay.
This is your, like, slow time.
Oh my God, don't say that. I don't know, it's hard to know, this has been a summer of, uh, nothing but pace, so I don't know what happens when the, when we actually start going again and we've got a plan we're executing, I don't, I think it'll be something new at that point, that we have to continually revisit and all these protocols and all that.
Yes, let's aim for the thirteenth in court, just so you send out the assignments.
I will send out the assignments, I will draft an agenda while this is fresh in, in mind, I will, uh, communicate with Dorothy, copy Lori and, uh, we'll see what happens from there.
And we said three on the thirteenth, right?
Three or, I mean
Three or, how about three, three works.
Three works for me, yeah.
I mean, Dorothy can't make three, but she could do four, obviously that would be fine.
Okay. Erin, are you okay with, uh, what you noted today, any questions? All right, thank you very much.
So Court, Erin, Erin's going on vacation next week, so we'll just have to work on the, together, I can, Erin, I'm, Mary, and maybe you stay on for a minute and we'll just sync up on anything we gotta do next week, but
Okay.
I can get it to the town offices, that's not a problem, I just want you to know she's not available.
All right, and you can delegate whatever you want to us as well.
Okay.
Just don't, don't hesitate.
We'll figure it out.
Okay. With that, um, thank you, I'm glad we got this, uh, underway, I think our
Yeah, no, I think you, there's some policies there that are gonna be really important to have ahead of actual return here, so, thank you for that.
Yeah, absolutely, and, uh, so, uh, again, Cynthia, assignments will go out, draft agenda will go out, scheduling will get underway and, uh, hold those dates for now.
Thank you.
And I hope everybody has a good evening, um, we deserve it and, uh, stay safe, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
In a second. All right, our custom Sarah is that, uh, we, we get into this habit of one person moving things, one person adjourning and, uh, their, Erin can cut and paste. Doesn't always work, it's not a formal agreement.
It's not a policy.
Not a policy. All right, those in favor, Wilson?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Booth, aye, and I thank you very much, and, uh, we will depart and leave, uh, Erin and Lori to
Oh wait, we're not on my Zoom, I forgot, we'll get off Erin, I'll, let's, I'll send you another link.
Lori, it's fine, I, I can stop the recording.
Okay, thanks Chris.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you Chris.
Bye.
All right, thank you all, thank you.